Welcome everyone to the July 9th City Council meeting. Welcome to everyone here at home. We have a full agenda tonight. And the first thing up, well, I just want to say that this is our, a night with a ceremonial part of this night's meeting because we just had the Fourth of July and this is the meeting closest to Fourth of July. And the city manager is going to lead us into that part.
Thank you Mayor. And for the reading of the Declaration of Independence, tonight we have three veterans who will each read a portion of that. John Brown, who served in the Army from, in September 1969 through June of 1971, and he's a Vietnam veteran. We also have Ron Schmedic, who served in the US Navy from September 1954 through December of 1967. And then Charlie Henry, who is a World War II veteran and also a previous city manager here in Eugene, who served from March 1943 to June 1946. So they'll each come up, read a portion of the pledge, and then I've asked them all to come up and just lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance at that point.
We're honored to have all three of you here. And not that we don't honor you all evenly, but special tip of our hat to Charlie Henry for being here this evening. It's great to have you here. Go ahead.
Pardon me Madam Mayor, Andrew is stepping up. Mayor and Council, it's an honor to be asked to read this this evening. And if I have a difficulty with words, I've been told this is the King's English and so only the King will know. So, "The Declaration of Independence, in Congress, July 4th, 1776. The unanimous declaration of the thirteen United States of America. When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed; that for ever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes. And accordingly, all experience has shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer, while evils are sufferable, than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations, pursuing invariably the same objectives, a design to reduce them under absolute deputism, it is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. Such has been the patient sufferance of these colonies, and such is now the necessity which constrains them to alter their former systems of government. The history of the present King of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having in direct effect the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states. To prove this, let facts be submitted to a candid world."
And we continue on. He has refused his assent to laws, the most wholesome and necessary for the public good. He has forbidden his governors to pass laws of immediate and pressing importance unless suspended in their operation till his assent should be obtained, and when so suspended, he has utterly neglected to attend to them. He has refused to pass other laws for the accommodation of large districts of people, unless those people would relinquish their, the right of representation in the legislature, a right inexplicable to them and formidable to tyrants only. He has called together legislative bodies at places unusual, uncomfortable, and distant from the depository of their public records, for the sole purpose of fatiguing them into the compliance and with, into, fatiguing them, fatiguing them into compliance with his measures. He has dissolved representative houses repeatedly for opposing with manly firmness his invasions on the rights of people. He has refused for a long time after such dissolutions to cause others to be elected, whereby the legislative powers incapable of annihilation have returned to the people at large for their exercise, the state remaining in the meantime exposed to all the dangers of invasion from without and convulsions within. He has endeavored to prevent the population of these states for that purpose, obstructing the laws for naturalization of foreigners, refusing to pass others, encouraging their migration hither, and raising the conditions of new appropriations of lands. He has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing his assent to laws establishing a jurid- jurid- jurisdictional powers. He has, has made judges depend on his will for the tenure of their offices and the amount and payment of their salaries. He has elected a multitude of offer, erected a multitude of offices and sent hither their swarm of officers to harass the people and to eat out their sustenance. He has kept among us in times of peace standing armies without the consent of our legislatures. He has affected to render the military independent of the superior, start over again, he has, he has affected to render the military independent of and superior to civil power. He has combined, combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction of foreign, jurisdiction foreign to our Constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, giving his assent to their acts of pretended legislation. For quartering large bodies of armed troops among us, for protecting them by mock trial from punishment for any murders which they should commit on the inhabitants of the states. For cutting off the trade with all parts of the world, for imposing taxes on us without our consent, for depriving us in many cases of the benefit of trial by jury. For transporting us beyond seas to be tried for pretended offenses, for abolishing the free system of English laws in neighboring provinces, establishing therein an arbitrary government and enlarging its boundaries so as to render it at once an example and fit instrument for introducing the same absolute rule on these colonies. For taking away our charters, abolishing our most valuable laws and altering fundamentally the forms of our government. For suspending our own legislatures and declaring themselves invested with power to legislate for us and in all cases what's forever. He has abducted government here by declaring us out of his protection and waging war against us. He has plundered our seas, ravaged our coasts, burnt our towns, and destroyed the lives of our people. He is at this time transporting large armies of foreign mercenaries to complete works of death and desolation and tyranny already begun with the circumstances of cruelty, perfidy, scarcely, parallel in most cases barbarous age, and totally unworthy of a head of a civilized nation. He is, he has constrained our fellow citizens taken captive on the high seas to bear arms against their country, to become executioners of their friends and their brethren, or to fall themselves by their hands. He has excited domestic insurrection among us and has endeavored to bring on the inhabitants of our frontiers, the merciless Indian savages whose rule, whose known rule of warfare is undistinguished destruction of all ages, sexes, and conditions."
Let's give it a harsh part. Well, I too feel honored in being invited to take part in this reading of the Declaration of Independence. In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for redress in the most humble terms. Our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury. A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people. Nor have we been wanting in attentions to our British brethren. We have warned them from time to time of attempts by their legislature to extend an unwarrantable jurisdiction over us. We have reminded them of the circumstances of our immigration and settlement here. We have appealed to their native justice and magnanimity, and we have conjured them by the ties of our common kindred to disavow these usurpations which would inevitably interrupt our connections and correspondence. They too have been deaf to the voice of justice and consanguinity. We must therefore acquiesce in the necessity which denounces our separation and hold them as we hold the rest of mankind enemies in war, in peace friends. We therefore, the representatives of the United States of America, in general Congress assembled, appealing to the Supreme Judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions, do in the name and by the authority of the good people of these colonies solemnly publish and declare that these united colonies are, and of right ought to be, free and independent states, that they have absolved from all allegiance to the British Crown, and that all political connections between them and the State of Great Britain is and ought to be totally dissolved. And that, as free and independent states, they have full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce, and to do all other acts and things which independent states may of right do. And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor."
Thank you. I'm going to break a rule and say let's clap.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. We're very honored by that presentation. We have another important item this evening, and that is the recognition of reaccreditation of the Eugene Public Works by the American Public Works Association. And our city manager, John Reese, is going to start us off here.
Thank you Mayor, and I'll introduce John Ostrawski, Ostrawski. He's a former Public Works Director in Vancouver, Washington. He's a national top ten Public Works Leader, which, as we know Peggy Kepler, just recently from our engineering shop, has awarded that prestigious award. And he's a longtime advocate of education, training, and accreditation in all areas of public works. So, John, why don't you join us? He'll say a few words, and then Mayor Piercy will present a plaque and say a few things, and then our Public Works Director Kirk Corey will weigh in.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Actually, a couple preliminary comments here before I get started. I think that, I have to point out that the American Public Works Association not just likes Eugene, because, you know, like is just something you click on, but actually loves Eugene if you think about it. I'm not exaggerating too much probably if I say that just about every award and leadership role that APWA has, somebody in Eugene has taken it on. I mean, you have three top ten leaders on your staff, John and Kurt and Peggy. You have something you're probably not aware of, there is a thing called the Northwest Public Works Institute that has about a quarter of the national graduates in leadership training. And there's, it's only been around for about five years, and there's a hundred graduates in Northwest, in the Northwest area, Oregon and Washington, and ten of those are from Eugene. And there are only a couple larger agencies that have a couple more than ten. And Eugene has the largest number of graduates in Washington and Oregon, and that's including all cities. So, I think you have got a, you know, a history of a leadership role in this sort of thing. And I'm here to talk about accreditation however, and accreditation is one of those roles in which you've, you've been a leader over the years. And I want, I'll say a few things about accreditation and agency, but I want you to remember three things. One is that this is a difficult process. Two, it makes you better. And three, you should be proud of the people who did it for you. When I say it's a difficult process, there are eighty-three agencies in the United States that are accredited. And you were accredited in 2004 for the first time when there were about twenty or so. And so there are only about twenty, there's I think about fifteen that have gone through two, at least two reaccreditations as you have, and have stuck with the program. And there are another seven that are kind of up for reaccreditation the second time this year, or third time this year. So it's a very difficult process because you have to look at like five hundred management practices. And you might think that on reaccreditation it gets a little bit easier because we don't look at as many management practices on reaccreditation, there's only a couple hundred. But it's a, it's a random sample that we take. But you don't know which ones we're going to look at, so if we only look at two hundred, you still have to be ready for all of them. And so it's just as hard to get ready for reaccreditation as it is to get ready for accreditation. And you have to look at everything you do and go over things with a fine tooth comb. And so it's a, it's a very difficult process, takes several years to get ready the first time. And it makes you better. There are things that people have found through going through accreditation that just looking at their processes, they could see how they could improve, and people have even saved, saved a few dollars along the way. And especially you look at reaccreditation, if you have to look at your agency and everything that you do every four years to get ready for reaccreditation, just that review is helpful in just kind of seeing where you are and measuring yourself against national management practices, that they themselves are reviewed every four years, and there's a new management practices manual that comes out every four years as well. And I mentioned, you know, some of the leadership you have in, in the organization already, so I think you, you know, should be proud of, of the people who did it for you. You have yourselves to thank really, without the support of the council, you wouldn't be doing this sort of thing, the city manager of course, and the public works director. And then, you know, I think Kurt will be talking about Gary and Carla's role in this when we get to that later on. But it takes a team effort on, on the part of everybody that's involved in this thing. So, as I said, it's, it's a difficult process, takes a long time to crank through it, but it makes you better, and you should be proud of the people who did it for you. And so with that, I think the plaque is over there, and I'll be happy to present it to the mayor.
Congratulations.
Hi. Do you want to go back? Oh, my God.
You go back, I'll go back there.
Okay. I want everybody to see, here you go. And, wait a minute, are you coming up your earpiece?
Oh.
All right. Just up here. Thank you so much. Yeah. Here. 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 Twenty-seven. Five. It was to you. So on behalf of all of us, I want to really thank John Ostrawski and APWA. We've heard how reaccreditation helps our Public Works Department live up to our high standards of excellence. It's also important to recognize that reaccreditation has great value to our whole community. Think of the vital services that Public Works provides. Keeping our transportation system running smoothly and safely. Think about those roads. Treating our wastewater. Being out there in the middle of the night if that's what it takes to handle an emergency. Think of the major assets we entrust to Public Works. Our parks and open space, our airport, significant funding to maintain and operate these vital systems. Reaccreditation tells the community these responsibilities are being handled professionally, efficiently, and with care and concern for the people of Eugene. So we all take great pride in this and we appreciate it very, very much. (applause) Now we're going to invite the man at the helm here, Kirk Corey.
Thanks very much. Just to take a couple more minutes of your time. So I'd first like to thank the mayor and our city manager for their support of these efforts. The, the team of professional creditors that came in from around the country last month specifically noted and commented on the very obvious support of, of the accreditation effort from the top down in the organization is not something that they automatically see around the, the country, and so we very much appreciate that. I'd like to invite Gary McNeil and Carla Spangler to come up here for just a moment to acknowledge the work that they did. So we embarked upon the self-assessment process leading to accreditation a little over ten years ago with a couple of specific goals in mind. I think one of the, the high ones on my list was our succession planning. Accreditation provided us the opportunity to try and capture the collective wisdom, the operational knowledge and experience, the overall ideas and practices of a lot of our long-term staff before they retired and walked out the door. In fact, a week ago Friday, four of our long-term staff, including this man here, elected to retire from the organization. And adding up the numbers, those four people alone provided more than one hundred collective years of service to Eugene Public Works. The accreditation process, in my opinion, has been instrumental in helping us deal with the ongoing turnover and providing some stability in our ability to keep functioning. Secondly, we were looking to create an opportunity for folks at all levels of our organization to have some input into how we do our business, and more importantly, how to allow us to do our business better. And we looked to the accreditation process to do that. Of course, having a lot of people involved in project requires some leadership, and Gary and Carla stepped forward and volunteered to co-manage this process for us. They did this while managing the demands of their regular jobs, Carla in our maintenance division and Gary in our engineering division. Through their work, they, they oversaw the updating and review of nearly five hundred individual management practices and put the organization in a favorable position for success, which, which we achieved last month. They are clearly instrumental and shining examples of what our mission statement stands for, which is making lives better through the services we provide every day. So, Gary and Carla, thanks very much. Gary's family is with him here this evening. We wish Gary the best in his retirement. Thanks very much for the opportunity to recognize the department and the organization indeed for this achievement, and let John Reese have the final word.
And John, before you wrap it up, I just want to express my real appreciation to you, Kirk and Gary and Carla. Thank you all so much, and happy retirement. And Gary's actually continues as a civilian here to serve on, as a member of the act, so he's still keeping his hands in what's going on in our, in our region. So, thank you all very much. John, you're on.
Thank you Mayor, and just to keep it brief, I'll also just say thank you very much to Gary and Carla. And they're just two employees that, as you know, we just have a terrific talented employee base here in Eugene, and we're very fortunate to have that. And there are just two of them that I think represent the rest of their teammates extremely well. And Kirk is a fabulous Public Works Leader and is recognized nationally for that. And so that's, kudos to him, but also it's nice for us to have that. And accreditation is a, is really an important piece, as was articulated by the mayor and also by John and Kurt. It just is a, it's a way of helping the community and to assuring and reassuring the community that they have good stewards within the city. And there are people that are watching our infrastructure in a really thoughtful way. And so I would just offer my thanks to the hard work that they've achieved.
Thank you all. Thank you again. That was very, very nice. We're going to go on now to the public forum part of our meeting. Thank you all for being here, Gary's family and everyone, we appreciate that. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have fifteen seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. I didn't officially open the forum, so there it's officially open. No signs in here, sorry. Sorry. No signs. You need to take it down. Thank you anyway. Hmm? And no, and because we broke our rules about clapping for the ceremonial things, I just want to remind everybody that during the forum, it's really important to us that everyone with all their diversity of views and opinions feels safe and feels fine about being here and speaking to us, so we don't clap and we don't make any other kinds of noises. You can do this if you, it's noiseless. Anyway, so we have twenty-seven people signed up. And first off is Mary Salinas, followed by Shelley Dedman.
Hello, my name is Mary Salinas. I live in Springfield. I'm a spokesperson for the homeless. I come here tonight for my homeless community, ninety percent of whom are dead. I'm going to read off the ones that I remember. Shorty Clifford Morgan died of bone cancer, untreated bone cancer. Trish died of untreated liver cancer. Judy was run over by an RV. Carrie succumbed to old injuries. Jeff was placed in a dumpster by someone we didn't know who. The blades of the dumpster truck killed him. Tristan was found dead in the river. Tom was stabbed to death by the man who threatened to kill me. Ken Man was horribly burned in a tent. Buzz was kicked to death in prison. Warren died of pneumonia. Tommy died of an overdose. Carrie's man was killed by a gun. Jimmy was stabbed to death. Steve died from wounds he received in Vietnam. Judy's man died in a garage of natural causes. And then they were all the disappeared. It's only been thirteen years and ninety percent of us have died. We don't accept that death rate in anyone, anyone, except the homeless. And those were the community that I belong to, but tonight, they're all dying of the same things, tonight. They're not just lazy bums. I get so upset when you just, I, I don't know what to do, you know, I just keep coming Shorty's funeral, they said, was the saddest funeral they'd ever been to. We were so sad. I'm still crying. I overheard a conversation with a policeman. He told some young people that it was very nice that they had helped a homeless man, but they shouldn't have touched him because they might have gotten diseases. Now, we're instructed by the police to not touch us. Let us die, let it be. And I understood that I have to talk about that too. That's what I'm here for. Thank you.
Shelley Dedman is next, followed by Helen Legori.
I'm going to try to remain focused on my original purpose for coming after that. Good evening, councilors. My name is Shelley Dedman. I'm a recent graduate of the University of Oregon Leadership and Sustainability Graduate Certificate Program. My purpose tonight is to come and introduce you to, on behalf of my new employer, to Hestra Home Biogas. It's a startup renewable energy company here in town. We're going to be installing biogas digesters, and they use the process of anaerobic digestion, which is you put organic plant material into a system and you get out a clean, burnable methane gas that is similar in form and use to natural gas, but cheaper and more reliable than solar panels. So it's a really great new thing, and I'm excited to be here to share it with you. My real purpose for coming tonight is to invite you all to come out to the working prototype that we have here in Eugene. We're just a few short steps away from being approved for city code to install these things around town. Until then, we're working on farms in the county. And so I wanted to thank you all for your attention, and also say that the folks from the city have been very helpful in getting us approved to city code from the Waste Prevention Department and from Planning and Development, and even the Fire Department. So look for an email from me later this week, and I'll hopefully get to set up meetings with you all to show you this exciting new energy that will be providing clean, renewable, homegrown, homemade energy to people here in Eugene. So, thanks for your attention.
Helen Legori is next, followed by Carol Berg Caldwell.
Hello, city manager and council. I'm a member of the community that is Eugene.
Would you introduce yourself?
Oh, Helen Legori.
Thank you.
Eugene. Betty Taylor is my councilperson. I'm a member of the community that is Eugene, one who wants to see implemented the recommendations of the task force you assembled to address the needs of our unhoused people. I'm not an occupier, although I align myself with them philosophically. And I'm glad that Occupy Eugene protest site became the occasion for resurrection, resurrecting the concern of our city for the unhoused. I was active in the homeless action coalition that obtained legal places for people to sleep. That was over 10 years ago, and we certainly needed the prodding to once again move forward toward resolving our common need. It's my opinion that when we consider developing downtown, unless we provide at least the services recommended by the task force, we will once again have the same old, same old. The same problems, the same results. The unhoused citizens will have no place to be, and the housed citizens will still avoid downtown. I recognize council has many balls in the air. It's your job to juggle. It's my job as a Christian and a citizen to keep in front of you the needs of our unhoused citizens. A couple of weeks ago, I asked for an increase of porta potties with handwashing stations, suggesting using unhoused people as attendants, much as David Gerber uses them as vendors for his newspaper, The Vagabond. I believe any employment is good in resolving homelessness. And having the unhoused take ownership of any portion of the resolution is excellent.
Thank you. Carol Berg Caldwell is next, followed by Mark Rubenowitz.
Thank you, Carol Berg Caldwell. I'm in Councilor Zelenka's ward, and I appreciate the work you do for us, Alan. In recent weeks, I've spoken before city boards and commissions to comment much about our new Eugene Municipal Courthouse at Lincoln and 11th. Now I'd like to share this with you. I've been observing at municipal court for 27 months, 26 of them at the old court. What a world of difference and improvement. But a courtfront counter clerk put it best to me recently. She said court clients are now looking at this as a real court, not just some office tucked off a side hallway at City Hall. But what I see at the new court also from court clients isn't just this sense of regard and respect, but also a lot of appreciation. For new amenities include a courtesy phone in the lobby for clients to make local calls for needs that come up. Also, a kids' play area, complete with a few colorful safe toys. The expanded lobby is surely helpful, too. People can get to a more secluded corner to process, ponder, and prepare. Before, it was like sardines at the old court. The court staff still did their best to serve there under challenging circumstances, to their credit. But I'm so glad for them and for all court clients now for this much better layout. Also, the private meeting rooms in the new court for public defenders, prosecutors, clients to consult in is a huge improvement. And it is so fitting and so deserving that these attorney-client meeting rooms are now named the Fern Ing Attorney Client Meeting Room. Ms. Ing served our community many years as a public defender, most notably her effective compassionate work with clients of Eugene Municipal Court's Mental Health Court program. Finally, here's a nod to the city's team of public defenders, prosecutors, and municipal judges who brought to this new court exactly what I regularly saw for 26 months at the old court. They worked together to seek the best resolutions, but not just exclusively for the mental health court clients, for many folks. It's not just humane to work as a team to help people with mental challenges and other challenges, but it's also just smart on resources of courts and police and jails. Our city's team of public defenders, prosecutors, and judges are just so effective than this. So pay a visit to our new court. While I know that this has cost our city a pretty penny, I also know that judges there don't plan to put that burden on the backs of the people, the low-income or no-income people. I often see judges offer other alternatives such as community service, the downtown cleanup program, which gives people double credit, because they do recognize that putting additional burdens would be tough, too impossible. Our court has a real human touch, and I am glad for the court staffers and for all in the community that we have this new home. And lest I forget, a special nod to McKenzie contractors and all subcontractors. They really did a good job. Thanks.
Mark Rubenowitz is next, followed by David Ivan Pacioni.
So I'm glad that the city helped bring author Richard Heinberg to Eugene a few months ago with Post Carbon Institute. And Richard's main message is we need energy literacy. And I'm not partisan about that. We need energy literacy from the government. We need it from the environmental movement as well. I brought two books from Richard's library. One's called Blackout. It's about peak coal. And the other is called The End of Growth: Adapting to Our New Economic Reality. Just like to read a sentence or two. In the U.S., most experts still rely on decades-old coal reserves assessments that are commonly, though erroneously, interpreted as indicating that the nation has a 250-year supply of coal. In terms of the energy it yields, domestic coal production peaked in the late 1990s. More coal is being mined today in raw tonnage, but the coal is of lower and steadily declining energy content. So I'm not worried about coal trains coming through Eugene. It's not going to happen. It's not physically possible, regardless of the politics or the money. The only reason anyone's talking about coal export through the West Coast is the illusion that natural gas is now a 100-year supply in the United States, which is about as real as the tooth fairy or Santa Claus. Natural gas wells that are fracked using solvents and high pressure and sometimes explosives and directional drilling up to two miles from the wellhead give out very quickly after a year or two. It takes a lot of money and energy and technical talent to do fracking. It's also polluting, but that's a separate issue. And when the gas bubble bursts, the rush to burn natural gas instead of coal is going to go up in smoke. And if there is any coal export, it'll go to where there's already a rail line that exists and doesn't need $200 million of public subsidy to rebuild. If we're going to talk about real environmental issues, Councilor Zelenka and Mayor Piercy voted not too many months ago for the billion-dollar-plus regional transportation plan, which would widen Beltline and 126 and many other highways. State of Oregon says widening Beltline to up to 11 lanes -- I've seen the map -- would cost a quarter-billion dollars. We're spending $3 million on the study. That's enough to reconfigure the delta Beltline interchange to end the weaving issues that are the main traffic safety problem there. So we could be much more efficient if we weren't trying to accommodate growth that's not going to be coming. So I hope in the future, we can have an intelligent discussion based on physics as well as politics.
David Ivan Pacioni is next, followed by Mike Brinkley.
Good evening, everybody. Councilors and people, we're back. Here are the facts that Zelenka asked about --
Just introduce yourself on the --
David Pacioni.
Thank you.
Investment in fossil fuels, coal, tar sands, fracking, offshore drilling, will be like an Everest in the way of society's change for survival. If you study geology, you will see that there's a limited layer of hydrocarbons underground, but that these layers are getting almost too thin to extract economically. We still have large enough concentrated energy in this form that an industry powered by these chemicals can provide the initial investment in power to run diverse green energy projects that can harness power from the sun, the wind, and geothermal. Another use of fossil energy we have left is to remove cement and asphalt and to turn it into arable land. With all big cities relying on the rural areas for food, we need to rearrange some things like growing veggies and even farm animals, if not to eat them for their manure. Cattle eat the part we reject, the fodder, and form dung, which when mixed with straw, serves as human dwelling's material. It also builds nitrogen into the soil for fertility, which soon petrochemicals won't be able to provide. Coal export, many experienced forest warriors and I believe, is a cover-up to ship large amounts of our jobs, forests, and logs out into processing plants a few miles offshore and then ship back for our own use. How much is this going to cost our community? People in charge of making these decisions need to put some detail into this expenditure of resources and pollution to us and our environment. Coal dust is notoriously difficult to control. Explosions of coal dust are probable, as well as derailments, which have already started to happen. We should have a county-level review of how many gallons of poisons and inert-carrying chemicals are going into Lane County's environment by logging companies. Cancers, neurological damage, birth defects, reduced sperm count, suppressed immune systems, and reproductive harms are some of the problems. Wartime agent orange derivatives such as pesticides, herbicides, fungicides, et cetera, cause all living beings within at least 20 miles of aerial spraying. The Fosseus Plan needs a wrench thrown into it. It is completely crazy. It gives zero to the community and allow big timber to steal most of what's left of our sorry forests. To summarize, big coal and timber pillage are connected, and they both should be killed.
David, stop, please. Thank you. Mike Brinkley's next, followed by Irene Ferguson.
I'm Mike Brinkley, 2582 West 28th Avenue in Eugene. I'm speaking to you as a citizen of Eugene on behalf of the CR Club as political chair of the CR Club Many Rivers Group. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you on the issue of regulating the use of disposable plastic carry-out bags. We support Councilor Zelenka's draft ordinance before the council to regulate single-use plastic bags in the city. These bags are not only unsightly litter, they're responsible for the death of thousands of birds and sea mammals each year. The city of Eugene metro region is located on two of Oregon's largest rivers, the Willamette and McKenzie, and these drain into the Columbia and eventually enter the Pacific Ocean. And disposable plastic bags enter and clog storm drains and make their way by these rivers to the ocean where they pollute and endanger animals that become entangled in or eat them. Further, recycling managers say that trying to recycle plastic bags is not cost-effective. They're difficult to recycle, they frequently contaminate materials that are processed through the city's curbside recycling programs, and they're so durable, they wind around machines and frequently slow down operations. Single-use bags represent a small percentage of recycling, but they're 40% of the labor cost. The city of Eugene's goals and values include protecting and enhancing the region's natural assets, ensuring quality habitat for fish, wildlife, and people, and reducing and managing waste in an environmentally sound and cost-effective manner. The city strives to promote sustainability of the solid waste and recycling program that includes maximum efficiency, equity, and economic vitality, improved worker safety, and reduced environmental and human health impacts over the entire lifecycle of these materials. The average citizen uses approximately 500 disposable plastic bags each year. Because single-use plastic bags are completely inconsistent with the city's goals and values and are a massive environmental threat to our oceans, fisheries, and wildlife, the CR Club Many Rivers Group urges this council to adopt the ordinance before you. We urge you instead to promote reusable shopping bags. This is the best option to reduce waste and litter, protect wildlife, and conserve resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene Ferguson is next, followed by Jerry Rosemeyer.
Hi, Irene Ferguson. Andrea Ortiz is my district -- anyway, I really have never done this before. Here I am, and I just really want to know definitively and unequivocally about the coal dust. I was listening to the Eugene City Club here a little while ago because I thought it was next Friday. It was last Friday. Anyway, they were saying that it is the railroad who is actually going to have to be responsible for containing and dealing with the coal dust. So my major thing is to make whoever is supposed to be answerable about how they're going to deal with the coal dust, to be asked to provide the proof that it is going to be contained in a safe manner. From things that I've heard, I hear a lot of sliding away from exact answers and so forth. So that's all I can say right now. All the fact that I got up here at all, thank you. Have a --
Jerry Rosemeyer is next, followed by Jerry Smith.
My name is Jerry Rosemeyer, 1380 Hughes Street, Ward 6. I'm speaking as an active member of No Coal Eugene. When I spoke before in support of Councilor Zelenka's proposal banning coal trains, I mentioned something you should consider, the impact that coal trains would have on other rail traffic in Eugene, passenger trains, other freight trains. At the time, I was just thinking of the logistics, of the logistics of one to two long coal trains coming through Eugene to the coast every day, and one or two empty coal trains going back up to the Columbia, what effect that might have. I couldn't provide any more information because Union Pacific is not listed in the phone book, and I was unable to get a hold of them. Well, of course, in the meantime, and as I encourage you all to, if you have not yet, listen to the city club presentation on coal trains, in the last week, there has been three coal train derailments in the United States. Two in the Chicago area, one east of Pasco on Washington State. And just Googling it this morning, a truck carrying the -- And just Googling it this morning, a truck carrying the spilled coal from the spill site itself overturned, blocked the highway, and sent a woman to the hospital. Now, a coal train derailment in Eugene, of course, in the yards at an intersection, would be a disaster. It’d be something that—whether or not the Union Pacific dealt with it, it would be a civic disaster. But I’m asking you to—in deciding on your vote on Councilor Zelenka’s proposal—to think environmentally beyond the city limits of Eugene. What would happen if a coal train derailed over the Willamette, over the Mackenzie? As it leaves Eugene to the coast, it goes over Fernridge Reservoir for quite a bit—quite a bit. As it winds its way through the coast range, it goes through feeder streams coming down into the valley, the Long Tom, and of course, the Sayuslaw, over Old Trestles. Now, yes, that railway will have to be—has been brought up at the City Club—very expensively, and we don’t know quite yet by whom—expensively remodeled to carry possible coal trains, but the effects would affect Eugene. The wind, of course—if a derailment happened north of Eugene or west of Eugene, depending on the prevailing winds, could be very, very detrimental to Eugene. So I’m asking you to think about that, and I’m asking you all to vote against—to vote for—
Jerry Smith is next, followed by Eugene Drix.
Hi. I’m Jerry Smith from Counselor Taylor’s district. I’m a veteran and active in First Christian Church and a number of interfaith alliances and community groups. Today, like most Mondays, I spend in dialogue with homeless people—too many—who are also veterans. Without shelter, they are neither safe, clean, nor rested. Many have only food stamps as a safety net. Without storage and without cooking equipment, the type of food homeless people must buy is more expensive than food stamps offer in a month. They seldom have enough to eat unless community groups offer food as charity, and they need a place to go for shelter. In the present economy, they have little hope for any cash income. The community wants to help with Opportunity Village, as they have helped in the past on the cold days with the Egan Warming Centers. Most of the people forced into homelessness are rejected because they have disabilities. Government has withdrawn many services, especially local mental health. Still, if given opportunities, homeless people can be self-sufficient, especially if they can serve each other. We need more services than are now available, especially shelter. The depression is not their fault. Further, our environment is threatened by the overuse of fossil fuels, which pollute our air and our water, poisoning us. They cause our climate to be more threatening than yesterday’s mountain storms. Fossil fuels kill many important species, including humans, as they put our climate into a crisis. Do not participate in adding our fossil fuel problems with the coal train. Each car, I discovered, as they come from the coalfields to the coast, loses 500 pounds of coal dust. That’s each car in these huge trains. The coal dust is incredibly toxic, as is the diesel—from the extra train—the extra engines that are needed to pull these trains. Instead of one train—one diesel pulling the train, they need four or five because they’re so heavy. Of course, they’re destructive to the railroad, including the one that just dumped 30 cars into the upper part of our own gorge, falling on top of a car the last they knew that there were at least two people killed by the derailment. Thank you.
Eugene Drix is next, followed by Bob Granger.
It’s nice to be here. Thank you. My name is Drix, and I live on High Street, our beautiful town. Thank you, John, for inviting Charlie Henry and the rest of our veterans to lead that ceremony. That was very cool. And Charlie’s very cool—you heard me speak to him many times. Well, I called Charlie on the phone before tonight, and I said, “Charlie, what are you going to be wearing?” And he said, “I’m going to wear something light.” So, look at this—we’re not going to see it again. I don’t think I’ve ever felt so white in my life. It’s a little scary. But, yeah, white pants, white apron, white on. Okay. Yeah. Well, I just want to say thank you for so far what we’ve been doing in our downtown and the rest of our town. It’s getting beautiful. I was really proud of the Olympics—or the Olympic Trials we had here. That’s another part of our city, but, boy, we look good. The way Hayward Field was laid out—even with the weather—we got to share our rain with the rest of the country, and it was kind of fun. That’ll keep us from getting overpopulated when people in New Jersey watch it. But that’s—we like that, too. But it was wonderful. It makes me just proud, this whole town. The Butte to Butte Run—I didn’t see you, Mayor Kitty, this year, but I did see you, John, running down. And I see everybody there, and that’s my way to contribute—is to ring the bells and wave people on. By the time they get over that big hill and they’re going by my house on High Street, they’re pretty exhausted. People are just praying for the finish line. So my usual gag is, “Two more blocks. You just got two blocks.” And you can see their eyes light up, and they get excited. And then they look ahead, and they realize they’re just coming into downtown, and they go, “Two blocks.” And then I say, “But they’re big blocks.” And they laugh. And then you just wait, and you got a new crowd. You know, they come right by, and I try it again. But I enjoy it so much, and I think everybody else does, too. So with the Butte to Butte next year—if anyone wants to get up early and just cheer people on—it’s a lot of fun. And it is our town, our wonderful, diverse town. We’ve got the Oregon Country Fair going on this weekend. Boy, that’s the opposite of the Olympics. Except it really isn’t. It’s just another way to look at our town. Everybody brings another piece of the truth, and that we call diversity. I mean, look at me. I’m up here just talking away, and people thank me for doing this—they thank me for connecting us. And I do it just to interject some humor and some vision and philosophy into it, because we are all here in Eugene, and it is named after Eugene—which is us, which is me, which is I. So thank you. Thank you for being so cool, even on these hot summer days. And—I—oh, oh, one last thing. Quick, Drix, talk, talk. Okay. We have the Willamette presence going on with our new I-5 bridge, and that’s—a lot of times—the only thing people see when they come to Eugene. So just as a voice out there, a shout-out, let’s make it really pretty, because that’s a lot of times all they see of us. So at least let’s have a great sign. And a great sign to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Granger is next, followed by Robin Bloomgarden.
You’re a tough act of hollow. Good evening. My name is Bob Granger. I live on Glenmar Avenue, Ward 8. You’ve met my wife before. A couple of months ago, she was the Eugene Bag Monster Lady. It’s particularly gratifying for us, then, later in July, a proposal to ban sacred single-use plastic bags will be before you. For us, it presents an opportunity to do something for the environment that will be long-lasting. It was well over 20 years ago that Lori and I bought a number of cloth bags. Doing so enabled us to answer that inevitable question, “Plastic or paper,” by responding with “cloth.” Well, the bags are kept in the car for easy use, and we’ve used them for more than 20 years, and they’re still as useful today as they were back then. Back then, we could go for months and never see a single person using cloth bags. Now, we frequently do, particularly here in Eugene. Nevertheless, far too few people take advantage of the very simple and yet very effective way of making friends with the environment. For that reason, passing an ordinance entitled “Encourage reusable Bags and Ban Single-Use Plastic Carryout Bags” is the right thing to do. It may even contribute to making cloth bags the cultural norm. After all, throughout the years, most of the time, bringing your own containers was the thing to do. Maybe the past can be an inspiration for the future. Earth Fix reported on July 6th that in the Northwest, there are more than a million people who are getting along without using plastic bags, and that number is growing as more and more communities—Portland and Corvallis, for example—are banning the bag. The Northwest Grocery Association has even approved doing that on a state level. So your vote to ban the bag in Eugene is an important step for future generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robin Bloomgarden is next, followed by Michael Carrigan.
My name is Robin Bloomgarden, and Andrea is my wardmaster.
You manage their ward.
On May 30th of this year, six strong recommendations came out of the mayor’s task force on homelessness, which became known as Opportunity Eugene. Since that time, city council has approved a zoning change to allow expansion of the Eugene Mission. This is great. I’m not exactly sure if city council officially has endorsed the new street outreach medical program that came out of Occupy Eugene, but that group did receive some money to expand their programs on the streets. This is also great. Both of these positive outcomes will help numbers of homeless in Eugene, and that is to be applauded. One of the most important recommendations, in my humble opinion, was for council to direct city staff to identify potential sites—meaning land—for a safe and secure place to be for homeless folks this winter. This crucial recommendation does not appear to have made any—if much—if any headway so far. I know of a number of dedicated citizens working tirelessly on this, but where is city staff? There were a few immediate recommendations that were thought to be easy stuff that have not seen the light of day since May 30th either. For example, number three: Building and managing secure lockers at several locations near the major unofficial camping sites around Eugene. This would allow people to go to appointments, look for work, get medical help, et cetera, without worrying about where their stuff is. Number four: Open new bathrooms outside the downtown exclusion zone and mark those within the zone. By the way, I understand that more bathrooms are closing in the parks, et cetera, than are supposed to be added. What’s up with that? Home and business owners say they don’t want the homeless peeing or other worse things at the sides of their buildings. If there were clean and accessible, well-marked bathrooms, maybe they wouldn’t. And number six: Create a commission on homelessness to be tasked with addressing the same issues as the task force recommendations. I’m here tonight to strongly urge all of you to begin working on these recommendations, as well as the others I have not mentioned tonight. You have a great opportunity to do that at your council work session next Wednesday, July 18th, at 12 noon in the McNutt Room here at City Hall. And I would like to invite other interested citizens to come down and listen as well. It’s very important for all of you councilors to take charge.
Thank you. Michael Carrigan is next, followed by Ashley Miller.
My name is Michael Carrigan. I live in Ward 7—a great place to live. And I represent Community Alliance of Lane County, or CALC, which also has offices in Ward 7. I was part of Opportunity Eugene. It was an amazing experience and inspiring that such a diverse group of folks came together to figure out how we could do more to help the unhoused in our community. But the report we issued means nothing unless we take action to implement the recommendations of the task force. The effort has to be a collaboration between the community, city council, city staff, and like Robin, I urge you to direct the city manager at the work session on July 18th to come up with an action plan to put these recommendations into effect. I’m part of a group that’s come together called Opportunity Village Eugene, which wants to create the place to be. We’ve identified a site at 13th and Chambers. We think that would be a wonderful place to establish a village for the homeless. So what it would be—we’d be establishing a transitional equal village that would provide opportunities to those who are unhoused to work with other community members, to build a temporary place in which to transition away from the streets into a lifestyle that is more sustainable and self-fulfilling. The urban village will be self-governed and self-sustaining with oversight by a 501(c)(3) board that has been established. There’ll be no drugs, no alcohol, no violence, zero tolerance. The village begins with the notion that self-government and self-sustainability comprise the keystone to residents taking responsibility and thus regaining autonomy and dignity and respect. The design and organization of the village are based upon best practices derived from a comprehensive study of longstanding, successful tent cities in America, and also based on what’s happened in Portland with Dignity Village and what they’ve done in Seattle. There’s been a group—we’ve been meeting with folks, leaders in the community, and also the neighbors at 13th and Chambers, just talking to over 40 people about what will work, how can we best move forward with this, and how we can do it in a way that we—the whole community will be proud of this effort. It’ll demonstrate that far from being a burden on the citizenry, those who are homeless can be empowered to create and live in safe, clean, visually appealing communities that demonstrate a better way of sustainable living and empower them to give back to the larger community in which they live. So at the work session on July 18th, I urge you to direct city staff to work with Opportunity Village, to develop a homeless village that will be a model for the rest of the country. Thank you for the time today.
Thank you. Ashley Miller is next, followed by Randy Kane.
Hi, Ashley Miller. I’m in Ward 5. Thank you, mayor and council, for allowing us time to speak tonight. I work with the Oregon League of Conservation Voters. Recently, our volunteers have been talking to shoppers in the area, and in doing so, have collected over 300 postcards in support of a ban on single-use plastic bags in the City of Eugene. And I just want to read real quickly what it says. It says, “The undersigned resident of the State of Oregon hereby support a ban on plastic checkout bags within the City of Eugene to reduce the use of plastic bags, encourage the use of reusable bags, and reduce our dependence on finite natural resources. Such a policy should include a fee on paper to encourage reusables. I urge Eugene City Council to cut the flow of pollution into the ocean by banning disposable plastic bags. On behalf of OLCV, Environment Oregon, and the Surf Rider Foundation, we’d like to present these cards to the council. And we hope you will support Councilor Zelenka’s draft ordinance with the fee on paper bags. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Kane is next, followed by Alan Hancock.
My name is Randy Kane, 1236 West 13th Avenue, Eugene, Oregon. A couple of quick things. I helped a gentleman get to the bus station today. He was homeless. He was a veteran. He was looking for a place to get a shower and some de-lousing done. He was apparently—he did not have an Oregon ID and was apparently unable to get one because he had no billing address or a piece of—or bill that had his name on it. So he wasn’t able to obtain services here. He said Whitebird turned him down because he did not have an ID. I don’t know—I don’t know if there really is no service available for him, or if I was even getting the story correctly, but this is what he told me. I did help him—I got him a new pair of socks and got him on the bus today out of town, so that’s his story. On the 4th of July, I thought it would be neat to come over here and take some pictures of the fireworks display with the City Hall and the American flag, and see if I—see how my new camera worked on my cellphone. And I was stopped by—halfway through the fireworks display by two Eugene police officers asking me to please vacate the premises and could they see my ID, please? Didn’t have anything to hide, showed them my ID. And so I realized that they weren’t violating a Fourth Amendment right— And so I realized that they weren't violating a Fourth Amendment right, but I felt as if it was papers, please. And that just did not feel good. And I missed half the fireworks show and easily, you know, under the three minutes, it would have been over. And on my final point, the coal trains. I lived for 18 years in Rapid City, South Dakota. I had many friends in Sheridan, Wyoming. When mile-long to two-mile-long coal trains come through at the rate of 10 to, one every 10 to 15 minutes, 14, 16 hours a day before there's a lapse, that's, if full's going one-way, empty's coming back. And you should see the tube of black that leaves hovering over the tracks as the trains go through at 80 miles an hour at that point in Sheridan. It is an incredible sight. And being there, there really aren't any trees or anything. It's just flat and arid. It's hard to believe so much pollution can come off of one train. I would highly discourage that because Sheridan really regretted giving them permission to use those tracks for coal trains. Thank you.
Alan Hancock is next, followed by Sasha Luftig.
I'm Alan Hancock, and I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward. I'm on the steering committee of the Lane County chapter of the Oregon League of Conservation Voters, and I'm here to support the resolution that is being drafted right now for City Council to ban the single-use plastic bag. By doing so, you'd be joining such entities as the nations of India and China, and which represent well over a billion other people on the planet in preventing pollution in our land as well as the oceans. There are now nearly 40 communities in the U.S., including more than 18 in California. Now Portland and Corvallis have both passed single-use bag bans. I think this is a moral issue. It is one of just taking a small step in taking care of our home. And just like I don't throw trash into my backyard or into the neighbor's backyard, we just need to take a small step as a community. Very simple. It's worked in other places. And I encourage you to include a fee on paper bags so that we get full support of all the interested parties. Thank you.
Sasha Luftig is next, followed by Sabra Markroft.
Hello, my name is Sasha Luftig, and I am in Counselor Brown's Ward. I'm also on the steering committee for Oregon League of Conservation Voters, and I'm a new Sustainability Commission member. I'm here to support the proposed ordinance on banning single-use plastic bags, as well as the five-cent fee. While the scale of impact may be relatively small in the scheme of environmental action, every community member will be required to adapt their behavior when they go to the store, either planning ahead and bringing a reusable or recycled bag, or paying the five-cent fee for a paper bag. Maybe it is idealistic of me to hope that this will lead to bigger behavior changes, like riding a bike to work instead of driving, or participating in E-Web's green power program, or buying local food. But every change has to start somewhere, and I think a citywide bag ban speaks to this community's reputation as an environmental leader. If LA and Corvallis can do it with a fee, so can we. On a separate but related note, I also want to urge you, as the leaders of our community, to continue to live up to that reputation by passing the resolution in support of reducing greenhouse gas pollution under the Clean Air Act, and the resolution to oppose the transportation of coal for export through Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you. Sabra Markroft is next, followed by Sean Miller.
Hello, I'm Sabra Markroft. I live in Andrea Ortiz's Ward. Everybody who's spoken has said everything I had to say so much better than I could, so I'll be very brief. Please listen as best you can. We need to stop wasting our resources and start seeing them as unused opportunities, and that includes human ones. Thank you.
Sean Miller is next, followed by Howard Bonnet.
Thank you, Mayor Piracy, members of the Eugene City Council. Sean Miller, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Northwest Grocery Association. And I'm here tonight in support of the plastic bag ban with the five-cent pass-through fee on recycled paper bags. And this is a unique opportunity for business interests, environmental interests to come together and support a position, just like we did at the state level. You have my written testimony, but I wanted to focus tonight on the importance of the five-cent pass-through fee on recycled paper bags. This is essential to getting the goal of reducing single-use plastic bags. The stores that I represent here in Eugene, 15 large retail chain grocery stores, are the majority of those single-use bags in the city of Eugene. And the five-cent fee is the only way to change behavior, to move them to the reusable bag. And I wanted to use examples because Portland's been in effect now for a year, and we have data that we just presented to Portland, hoping they will revisit their issue and add the five-cent fee. Corvallis just included the five-cent pass-through fee. Since the ban in the city of Portland, there's been a 400 and, was it 400 and, sorry, 91% increase in paper usage. And this is an increase of 2,200 recycled paper bags per day, per store, and again, 23 stores, which is about a third of Portland, in which we surveyed the data. So it's very representative and very good data for the city of Portland. That's an annual increase when you do the cost shift from plastic to paper of $27,288 per store. So not only are you increasing the cost of the price of groceries, you're not getting the environmental goal of moving people to reusable bags. So the five-cent pass-through fee, again, is essential. The data in the cities that have put the fee in place, such as the city of, I'm sorry, Washington, D.C., before their five-cent fee was in place, there was about 270 million bags going a year through grocery and convenience stores. That has reduced to about 55 million bags. So that is a drastic reduction and shows you that the fee, even though it is an avoidable fee, actually does change behavior and move people to recycled, I'm sorry, reusable bags. And so again, if the goal, the environmental goal, is to move people to reusables, the five-cent fee is the only way to do it. And again, I've heard issues of why don't you do it voluntarily? Well, voluntarily is what we have today, because anybody can do it now. And in a competitive issue, in keeping people on the same level playing field, you will not have stores move voluntarily, because all it takes is one, not two. And again, if you're talking about a $27,000 increase in, expense increase from going from plastic to paper, you won't see anybody else move unless you make it mandatory. Thank you.
Thank you. Howard Bonnet is next, followed by Jordan Chestnut.
Good evening. My name is Howard Bonnet, and I live at 1835 East 28th, and I'm in Councilor Zelenka's Ward. And I'm here representing the Sustainability Commission tonight to remind you that we've communicated with you on vote bond measure, and we've also communicated with you on the coal train issue. And at our last meeting, we voted to unanimously support the resolution before you on climate. And Kathy Jaworski, our chairwoman, not able to be here tonight, so I'm here representing the Sustainability Commission. The only other thing I wanted to say was I wanted to put a number on the derailment in Washington of the coal train. Not every car dipped over, only some of them, so only about a thousand tons of coal actually spilled.
Jordan Chestnut is next, followed by Noah DeWitt.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Jordan Chestnut. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of No Coal Eugene, and our support of Resolution 5065 to oppose the transportation of coal through the city of Eugene. With the Declaration of Independence, as we read earlier, they mentioned the equal protection of persons under law. And with early revolutionary legislator, this did not include corporations, but rather solely persons, citizens of the United States. But because of railroad corporations, it began to take on a new form. And now corporations are able to ship something like coal through our cities for their own private interest. So really, what we have is not just a coal issue, but a question of democracy, and whether or not our community wants to have community health or support private interest. And I'm here tonight to ask you, as city councilmembers, to support our community's health, because the harms from proposed coal, the proposed coal project are numerous and affect every sphere of life, from the pollution of air, land, and water, from coal dust in freighter diesel exhaust, to leaching diesel, or to leaching toxic heavy metals, health threats from increased air pollution and environmental contamination, noise, the interruption of ambulance and public safety services, safety threats, loss of property values near the tracks, the loss of use of tracks by other freight carriers. It is also a direct violation of the Community Climate and Energy Action Plan for the city of Eugene. So thank you for your time, and please consider what community we want to create in your decision to support or oppose the coal exportation.
Noah DeWitt is next, followed by Kate Kelly.
My name is Noah DeWitt. I live at 1054 West 8th Avenue. I moved here to Eugene four years ago to attend University of Oregon, and my exit from Eugene is nowhere in sight. I'm sucked in. Climate change will affect us all. It will affect your generation. It will affect, it will affect my generation more so, and future generations more than that, and it's frightening. So I have made some choices that weren't easy to make, because the solution to the climate crisis will not be easy. I don't have a driver's license. I ride a bike everywhere I go. I refrain from using electric lighting whenever possible, and I spring for locally grown food with a smaller carbon footprint whenever I can. And I ask that the council does its part to protect the future, and to pass the resolution banning coal trains through Eugene, or opposing coal trains through Eugene, and also to defend our rights as humans to clean air, clean water, and a healthy climate for the future, which I believe are self-evident and inalienable. Thank you.
Kate Kelly is next, followed by Kevin Matthews.
My name is Kate Kelly. I live in Eugene, and I have a special friend here I want to introduce you to. This is the Bag Monster. And the Bag Monster is here to show you in a little bit how many bags people actually use. And in the United States, we use 100 million plastic bags a year. And the Bag Monster really doesn't want to be run out of town, because it's very powerful. It's everywhere. Every country on the planet has bags, and it's a very powerful entity. It's been responsible in India in the 1998 floods. They figured that plastic bags caused a good 1,000, 100, 1,000 deaths, because all the storm drains were clogged, and they couldn't, the floodwaters couldn't go away. China, however, is kind of in a different situation. After a year of banning the bags, they figured that they had saved 1.6 million tons of oil. And bags that are made out of a non-renewable resource called oil, that's a lot. But the Bag Monster really doesn't want to die, as we've seen by the American Chemical Council in Seattle, when they first tried to get the ban. The folks that wanted to ban the bag raised $63,000, which isn't a paltry sum. The American Chemical Council came up with 1.5 million, and they ruled it down. They won that first time. However, the bag lost. And as of this month, in Seattle, there will be a ban on the plastic bag. So we're hoping that Eugene will join other notorious entities, such as Seattle, Los Angeles, come on, folks, if Los Angeles can ban the bag, Eugene certainly can. Corvallis has. And just on a little more serious note, with the fee, when Portland did not institute the fee in theirs, and they found that even though they cut down plastic bags in the waste stream by eight and a half million bags, their paper bag consumption went up 500% without the fee. So I think, and perhaps Counselor Zelenka knows more on this, I think they're reconsidering the fee. But I really strongly encourage Eugene to add the fee in, to help compensate the grocers, as well as to encourage people to change their habits. We're a capitalistic society, and money talks. So, thank you very much, and thank you, Bag Monster.
Kevin Matthews is next, followed by Sarah Higginbotham.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Matthews, editor of Architecture Week Magazine, which currently has 70,000 subscribers and 300,000 monthly visitors. I wanted to touch base with you, following up on your work session today on City Hall. I think the basic concept of having a study of spending a set amount of money that the city could afford for tearing down this building and building a new City Hall, comparing that with spending the same amount of money on renovating this building, that was a nice piece of work, and the city managed it well, and it came out with some interesting findings. I'm kind of disappointed about the tenor of your conversation around those findings. And I'm kind of disappointed in the city administration's forthrightness in helping you understand those findings. There was quite a bit of conversation around your table about how the two options in front of you, tear down and build a little new building with a big, open area, or renovate this building, how those were so similar. And the words were even used by multiple counselors that they cost the same amount of money. Well, duh, they cost the same amount of money, because that was the exercise. It was to do two different things with the same amount of money. But when one option gets you five times, I don't remember the exact number, but when one option gets you many, many times more high-quality square feet of space for the city, there's no comparison between the costs. One option is hugely expensive per square foot of space for the city. The other option is very economical per square foot of space for the city. So let's not sit around the table and mumble and say these two things cost the same. They're totally different. It's a black-and-white decision. And when the citizens of Eugene see their City Hall mothballed, wrapped in chain-link fence, as it's going to be in a few months, they're going to be wondering what's going on. And I, as a architecture leader in this country and in this city, I am very disappointed that the City Hall is still being held hostage to a cultural agenda that doesn't like this mid-century modern style of architecture. This is the biggest piece of public art in the city. The green solution is to preserve it. The economical solution is to preserve it. The cultural solution is to preserve it. So why is it going to be sitting here as a standing pit?
Sarah Higginbotham is next, followed by Louisa Hamachek.
Thank you, city councilors, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Sarah Higginbotham. I'm the State Director at Environment Oregon. I'm here today representing our members based here in Oregon, excuse me, here in Eugene. Environment Oregon is a statewide, citizen-based, environmental advocacy organization. You've already heard from a fair number of folks tonight who support a ban on plastic bags here in Eugene, and you are familiar already, councilors, with so many of the issues. We have millions of tons of garbage floating in our oceans. I'll review the numbers here briefly. Most of them you already know. 90% of that garbage- 90% of that garbage out in the ocean is plastic, 90% of the floating debris. We know that 80% of that plastic comes from inland-based sources. And the most common type of plastic found in the ocean is low-density polyethylene plastic, which is the same type of plastic that single-use checkout grocery bags are made of. You already are familiar with the wildlife problems. We lose over 100,000 marine mammals every year and over a million seabirds. A Florida study revealed that 71% of sea turtles have ingested plastic. And in Seattle, two years ago in 2010, a gray whale, a beach gray whale, was found with 20 plastic bags in its stomach. For all of these reasons, you supported a statewide effort to ban plastic bags because we all know, and I think we all share the belief, that nothing we use for a few minutes should end up in the belly of a whale. I'd also like to point out what I think Mike, our friend Mike at the CR Club here locally mentioned, which is that recycling is not an option. We don't have that infrastructure here in Oregon. Nationally, less than 5% of plastic bags are recycled, and those that are actually shipped out of this, excuse me, those that are actually collected for recycling are exported to countries with fewer environmental regulations. When they do get into our waste stream here in Oregon, they cost our material recovery facilities a lot of money. They are 0.1% of the incoming volume of waste, but they account for 20% to 30% of the cost of these recycling facilities. And of course, as you've already heard from the Northwest Grocery Association, passing a comprehensive bag policy is extremely important. We don't want to shift people just from plastic to paper. We want to get rid of the plastic, and we want to put a disincentive on the use of paper bags. And that is the most effective way that we've seen all around the country to do, to actually move people to reusables. We know that in California, of the 42 cities and six counties that have a ban, all but four cities have a pass-through cost on paper. And in Washington, five of the six cities have a pass-through cost on paper as well. For all of these reasons, Environment Organ supports a ban on single-use plastic bags and a pass-through cost fee on paper bags. We urge the Eugene City Council to take swift action on this issue. The problem's not going away, and it grows exponentially every day. So we're happy to be a resource. We thank you for your time and your commitment to this issue, and we urge you to take quick action. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up, Louisa Hammacheck.
Evening, everybody, on this nice Sunday, summer evening. I love it. I'm Louisa Hammacheck from Andrea Ortiz's Board, seven. I have, I've come here to encourage you to develop the Opportunity Village, or whatever it's going to be called, enthusiastically and rapidly. Winter's coming on, and it's going to be rough. And let's get to work on it. And I've been on the committees that the mayor formed at first, and then the other one that's been meeting. And we're really excited about lots of designs. We've got some beautiful, modern, strikingly cool architectural ideas of ways to do temporary housing, shelters over people's tents, all these things to keep it good-looking, as well as very serviceable. And I love the twist of it, that it's Eugene, and we want it to be kind, and we want it to be nice, and respectful, and we want self-government. And so, please don't push it off. We've been working hard, about four or five hours every Monday, to work out the logistics of the legal part and then design ideas. And we don't stop. You know, there's all those things, the lockers, the showers, all those different projects we talked about through the winter with the mayor's group. And we're serious about it, and I'm really looking forward to doing it. And so I hope you go ahead and find us a patch of land, and the one that we're asking for on 13th and Chambers would be wonderful. We can work with anything that you give us, because we have so many ideas that are just overflowing and don't want to have politics to stop us, because we're ready to help. There's a lot of energy in this. So please move it forward as swiftly and efficiently as you can before winter, so we can get this set up. And the other thing is about the bags, Eugene is full of artists. I'm one. I do silk screen printing. And people are always trying to be the artist to do the country fair poster, the different things. So let's have an annual Eugene contest for canvas bags for people to bring in. And if we can go to local fibers, please develop some kind of local fibers for the outlying farmers to grow, that we can make these bags locally would be the coolest thing. Let's see. The railroad pollution, don't forget that right now, Union Pacific is spraying herbicides in the Whittaker neighborhood right next to people's houses, and they call it biocides, and they're proud of that. And I would like to see that stopped by this council through the Eugene district, that it's disgusting to spray things that kill all forms of life right next to children and pets and the works. And the noise is ridiculous. You should stop them from blowing so loud. Thanks.
Close the public hearing, and thank everyone for their comments. And I think you brought it up several times. Just want to remind people that the council will be discussing the proposal that came out of Opportunity Eugene on July 18th. Also want to let you know that staff have been working diligently on increased bathrooms and signage, so those issues have been, are presently being dealt with. I wanted to, unless something's changed that I don't know about, you can get a shower at the public service station on 99. There's a public service station that's there for the purpose of people being able to wash clothes, to take showers, to all that kind of thing. And, okay, that's all I've got, but other than just saying thank you very much. Councilor Zelenka.
Thank you all for coming out this evening and speaking to all these different issues. I wanted to comment on the plastic bag ban. I think it's a good idea. I think it's supported by the majority of Euginians. I think it's good for the environment, or animals, or rivers, or oceans. It can be made cost-neutral for business with the five-cent pass-through cost. It can be made equitable if we can get people bags, and everyone can completely avoid the five cent if they use a reusable bag. And not often we get to look at issues or be involved with issues that are promoted by both business interest and environmental interest, and working together for a common cause. I think that's a particular note here. The proposal I put forward, almost exactly like what Corvallis just passed unanimously in the council, eight to zero, and similar to the one that the city council supported in the legislature last year. It's not new in the West. Forty-nine cities in California, including the second-largest city in the United States, Los Angeles, has adopted it, seven in Washington, and of course Portland and Corvallis. And those that have tried the voluntary efforts without the fees, Seattle and Portland are currently reassessing their ordinances because they find that they're not accomplishing what they intended. The five-cent fee serves to create an incentive for people to use reusable bags, I think, that it's, and it's similar to the bottle bill, five-cent deposit. Even though five cents is 30 years old, I still bring my bottles back because they have five cents. Not many studies on this point, but I'll point out what Sean Miller from the Grocers Association pointed out, that Portland, without the fee, saw nearly a 500% increase in the use of paper bags, while Washington DC, which did have a fee, five cents, saw an overall bag decrease go from 270 million to 55 million. So, in addition, without that fee, the grocery stores will see a substantial cost shift. When they did a survey in Portland, they came, they looked at their grocery stores and the average, it was between $20,000 and $50,000 cost shift per store, but $27,000 on average per store, because paper costs more than plastic. So I think the five-cent fee can be entirely avoided by bringing your own reusable bag. It serves two purposes. It eliminates the cost burden of business, and it creates a successful incentive, like the bottle bill, to, for people to use reusable bags, which is the ultimate goal of this ordinance that I've brought forth. So I encourage my councillors to support it when it comes up on the agenda on June 23rd.
Must be July, since June's done.
July 23rd.
Councilor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming out and giving such good comments regarding different issues in the community. I just want to speak a little bit to the railroad coal issue. Councilor Zelenka has a motion that I'm planning to support, but my word, my comments to everybody is that we are one city, and we're talking about three different states that I can, Washington, Oregon, and Idaho, as we travel, as the coal train travels, whether it's going to or not, it's still a big push. So I would continue, people, to continue to work on this issue, encourage people to continue to work on this issue, because I don't think it's going to, our little statement that we're going to make here and the support that you're going to get from this council is going to really, doesn't really hold the weight of water when you look at the federal regulations. It's my understanding the railroad cannot refuse whatever anybody brings to their dock to transport, but I'm more than willing to go that, to do whatever I can to keep that from happening in this community. That's my front yard. That's where I live. This will affect my family and everybody along in my neighborhood, so I'm really concerned about it. So just, let's keep working together, folks, against this.
Right. I just want to point out that we are after nine o'clock, and we have a big full agenda, so I'm going to try to help us move through this rapidly, if I can. So consent calendar. Council President.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar. Second.
Moved and seconded. Don't see anyone in the queue. Would you please vote? Seven in favor and none in opposition. It passes. So, thank you all. So next we have the adoption of resolution calling for a city election. City Manager.
Mayor, we're here, staff's here to answer any questions you have. We've had a couple of work sessions on this topic, and so unless there are specific questions, we don't have a presentation prepared.
Hey, just for the public, this is about authorizing funds for general obligation bonds to fund street preservation projects and bicycle and pedestrian projects. Council President.
I move to approve Resolution 5063, placing a geo bond measure on the November 2012 ballot.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I don't see anybody in the queue. Would you please vote on that one? Seven in favor and none in opposition. It passes. The next action, number six, is approval of motions relating to production of a voter's pamphlet for the November 6, 2012 election. City Council President.
I move to direct the city manager to publish and distribute a local voter's pamphlet for the election scheduled for November 6, 2012, on a geo bond to fund street preservation, and authorize the expenditure of funds from the general fund contingency account that are required to produce that voter's pamphlet.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue. Would you please vote on that one? Seven in favor and none in opposition. It passes. So next up is a motion that needs to come from the council president to appoint councillors to the Voters Pamphlet Proponent Committee for the Street Preservation Geo Bond Ballot Measure. There, we need three volunteers for that role. Do we have volunteers?
Out everyone at once, please.
Okay, so we're going to put Counselor Pryor, Counselor Zelenka, and Counselor Brown.
No, I can't. I jumped in too many.
All right. So Pryor, Zelenka, and Brown is okay with everybody? All right, you want to put the motion on the table?
Yes. I move to appoint councillors Pryor, Zelenka, and Brown to the Voters Pamphlet Proponent Committee for the Street Preservation Geo Bond Ballot Measure.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Would you please vote? Seven in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. Now we're up to Resolution 5064 in support of reducing greenhouse gas pollution under the Clean Air Act. And I'm going to ask Councilor Zelenka if he wants to say something about that.
Sure, I'll be brief. I think climate change is one of the most important issues of our time, and how we respond, I think is very important. And responding at the local level does get noticed, as the mayor pointed out the other day with her letter from the, from the secretary, that we do get noticed when we say things at a local level at the federal level. So there's been lots of facts supporting public, and support from public testimony, and then there's also lots of facts in the resolution, so I won't go into those. I believe the vast majority of the things that we can do to combat global warming will save us all money and are cost-effective to do. And recently, the Supreme Court reaffirmed the ability of the, of this, of the Congress to use the Clean Air Act to combat global warming and climate change. And this resolution calls on the EPA Administrator to use the Clean Air Act to combat global warming, and it's part of a national campaign of cities. Twenty-seven cities listed to, to, have listed in support of this thing, as well as the most recent one, which was just a week or two ago, where the second largest city again, the city of Los Angeles, voted unanimously at their city council to support this very similar resolution. So that's 27 cities, including LA, Chicago, Seattle, Philadelphia, Salt Lake, Cincinnati, Tampa, Kansas City. It's all over the country. And I urge you to support its passage as well.
I don't believe my vote's going to be necessary on this, but I have supported this as mayor, and I would support it if necessary. All right, Counselor Pryor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions for the manager, if I may. By passing this resolution, what, what action does that, does it compel you to take any action of any kind?
Do you want to answer that, Counselor Zelenka?
Of course. That was for the mayor.
Oh, I see.
Section three of the resolution would require the city manager or the city recorder to forward this to President Obama, EPA Administrator, senators, and if there was an opportunity to do so, for the city to lobby on its behalf.
Very good. So very little expenditure as far as, as far as staff time or resources concerned?
Correct.
Okay. Then another question, can you describe the public process that's taken place to bring us to this resolution? Now, it says, it says here that it's expressed during public testimony. I suspect that's Monday night testimony. What kind of other public testimony, other public outreach has been made, other than emails?
We haven't been made any public process beyond what we've discussed.
Okay, so there's no public process. So we're being asked to pass a resolution without a public process, then? Okay, thank you.
So, I think we're ready to vote. Do you want to put the motion up?
Yes. I move to adopt Resolution 5064 in support of reducing greenhouse gas pollution under the Clean Air Act.
Moved and seconded. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Would you please vote? Five in favor and two in opposition. It passes. On to the next, Resolution 5065, to oppose the transport of coal for export through Eugene. And did you want to make any comments about that, Counselor Zelenka?
Sure, I'll be, I'll be brief. While we support the use of the Coos Bay Rail Link for freight and the resulting jobs that will occur in the port of Coos Bay, this issue really isn't about Coos Bay. This is a resolution that states that we currently believe that coal trains transporting coal through Eugene will have an adverse social, economic, and environmental consequences for Eugene. It will impact our public health. It's inconsistent with our efforts to improve our air quality and promote local food production. It's inconsistent with our efforts to reduce greenhouse gases in our Community Energy and Action Plan. And it calls, it supports Governor Kitzhaber's call to have a cumulative impact statement or a programmatic environmental impact statement under the National Environmental Protection Act, to look at the export, coal export proposals in the Northwest and their potential impacts on Oregon before substantial and irreversible commitments of resources are made. So I urge you to support this resolution.
Interestingly enough, in addition to the recent reports of coal cars turning over and spewing coal dust and such around the communities that they turned over in, today on NPR, there was an enormous show about the rise of black lung disease in this country, a huge, huge rise, and a lot of people who are acquiring that and dying very young in their 40s from the, from this, and it's going off the charts right now. Counselor Farr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions, once again, for the city manager. Does this resolution in... resolution in nature differ from the previous resolution in terms of direction of the city manager or, or staff time?
It's similar in what I said about the prior resolution. This resolution also has an additional section, Section Three, which requires the city to determine or to explore whether local, state, or federal laws protecting public health and safety and water quality can be used to prevent the transport of coal. And if we conclude that, there are such opportunities to take reasonable steps to try to prevent the transport. So it would require some work to do that research.
Can you describe the process that would go into that, that type of work?
The research?
Yeah.
It's basically me doing some research and contacting other communities that would have been trying to do the same thing, to see what alternatives they've come up with.
Okay. Well, this is a interesting issue. It's one that, that has piqued my interest. I see Ms. Kittleson sitting in the audience, and she and I have chatted a little bit about this. And, and I'm very interested in, in finding out more about the coal train. It's really, you know, there are numbers that have been thrown out. Three percent of the load is lost during shipment. Now, if that's a factual number, that amounts to, with the number of trains, up to 10 a day, that's 30 tons per week, or 15 full carloads of train, of coal per, full trainloads of coal per year being sifted out. Now, that seems like a lot of profit going to waste. So I'm, I'm thinking that there's a great deal of research that may be happening on this to, to, to capture the profit that's being sifted away by, by the coal companies. Fifteen full trainloads, just, trainloads of coal, just from the coal that's going through Eugene, based upon the numbers that we're looking at. So I, another question that I have is if nothing is done, that is to say if the, the building of the terminus in, in Coos Bay continues and the, and the rail line is repaired, as Congressman DeFazio has allocated money to do, when would we anticipate seeing the first coal train?
You know, I don't recall. It seems to me there was some information I don't want to put out by the, or if I don't recall at that point, the impact.
I believe that it might have been Brenda forwarding.
Is your, is your mic on?
I have that letter right here, if you'd like.
Counselor Clark has the written document that I was going to try to recollect, so I'll defer to him.
All right. Counselor Clark?
Well, I was actually gonna make that a part of mine. I was gonna go into the, the port director's communication as a part of my time, so if you want to do that.
That's fine, if you wanted to just wait on that mic, or if you just wanted. I, I've heard that it's several years, maybe three or four years before the terminus is ready to operate, that a great deal of changes are happening in technology, and that we don't really know how much dust would be sifted off in Eugene. Now, if any dust is being sifted off, that's an issue, and that's a problem. As I read, or as is noted in Forum Lane today, you know, anytime that we're having a detrimental effect on the people living here, we have to take it very, very seriously. But I'm afraid that this resolution is a little bit too soon to ask me and the entire council to make a binding decision on, regarding an issue that the, the information's not been fully vetted up to this point. Now, the fact that 15 full trainloads of coal per year is being sifted off, it seems to me there's a great deal of incentive for whoever's shipping the coal, whoever's receiving the coal, to save that 15 carloads of coal for profit alone. Now, if you, if you look at the numbers on that, the cost of shipping the coal is exactly the same, whether, whether the coal sifts off or not, in terms of the actual transportation. So, the 15 full trainloads of coal per year represent absolute pure 100% bottom line profit that's being sifted off. That's a lot of money. There's gonna be a great deal of research to make, to make sure that coal, the coal cars are safe and not sifting coal. Now, I do know that there are companies, I'd like to be in the queue again, Madam Mayor. There are companies that are doing this research right now. And, and that's, Green Brier, for one, are, there, there's a tremendous amount of research going on as far as making sure the coals, the cars aren't sifting coal. And the fact that they travel at 60 miles an hour for 1,000 miles before they get here, if they are sifting dust.
Want to second this, Brown?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. I appreciate this coming forward. I've actually had the chance to talk with some, a number of folks about this. I've heard the folks that have come here. And Counselor Zelenka shared this with me a while back, and I appreciate the fact that he did share this, so I did have a chance to think about it. One of the things I was doing was really looking forward to the conversation that we could have, and I was hoping it would be in some sort of a work session kind of environment where we could really talk about this, because I, too, have, have a lot of questions. I'm intrigued by it. I do believe there is an issue here. There is a core issue here, and I think it's something that we really want to be thoughtful about, and we do, and we do want to do something. I think we do definitely want to do something. And I could, I could support nearly all of what's here. I have some specific things that I would want to talk about and, and work through. And so I'm kind of, I just have that feeling that it's coming up at a formal session, we're having to vote on it now. I wish it had been in a work session. I told Counselor Zelenka, I look forward to the conversation about it, because I don't know where I would come down on it. If we have to vote on it tonight, there would be some things that I would want to ask were done, so that we still have the ability to, to talk about this some more. For example, Section Three, which the city council talked about, is if they do find some sort of a law, then we automatically take the steps to prevent the transport. Well, we don't get a chance to talk about that. I would be more comfortable if you can do that investigating if you want to, but if you should find something, it has to come back to us, rather than just automatically start pursuing an effort to prevent transport. I'm not saying I want transport. The whole notion of coal trains coming through town isn't on my wish list of things to have happen, so for that reason, I do agree there's an issue here. And it's not that I don't support what Counselor Zelenka's doing. I think it's, it's something that has some relevancy and we should talk about. I'm just nervous about, this is the very first time we, as a council, have had a chance to do kind of our own on it. And I'm just feeling frustrated that I'm having to do it up here at this podium right now and not have the work session I would have hoped we had. And maybe I didn't make that clear enough, that I was hoping for that kind of conversation when I said I'm looking forward to it. But if, if it looks like we're gonna vote on it tonight, then I would have some specific things I would need to do before I would be comfortable going forward with it.
Well, I'd actually like to discuss this for a moment, because this, to me, is different than a, a resolution where you're expressing a point of view. This actually calls for some action on our part locally. And, and so I can see the value in having a, a more in-depth conversation and actually having the time to look at the language and see if you want to tweak it. It's not, I wouldn't want this to be mistaken for being pro or con comment I'm making. I would want it to, to simply say that this is not just a, a political stance. This is an actual piece of action, and it merits you spending some, some, some time on it before you make a decision. So I would actually advocate that, because it's not time sensitive, I don't believe, Alan, right?
No.
I have a motion on that.
So, I'm just bringing that up to you, that, that maybe this would be something worth giving council a little bit more time to, to deliberate on. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to postpone consideration of the resolution until after. We've had a work session on it, and if I get a second, I'll speak to that.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. I, I agree with Chris about, and with, excuse me, with Counselor Pryor, with Counselor Farr, about the amount of time we would want to have for consideration. I spoke out pretty publicly about the idea of field burning when it took place. I was very much against it. The mayor and I attended a couple of meetings in that regard together. I don't have a problem in the world saying that this is a great concern to me. But at the same time, the letter that we got from the port commissioner, the port director mentions that they can't even begin the process of applying for the permits until at least 14 months from now. So, we're certainly not under any, any, not under the gun time-wise on this. And some of the potential consequences give me pause, and I have some questions about that. Whether or not any of the work to expand that rail line and the, the economic benefits that will come from the expansion at Coos Bay could end up down in Douglas County instead of through here and give us some real, real economic shocks because of it. So I want to make sure we're, we're doing this deliberatively and intelligently. You know, there's, there's a whole host of, of facts that the port director mentioned, that if you look at it from an environmentally sustainable position, you know, putting, putting these things on trains would save tons and tons of, of carbon that they'd be, that would be burnt and put into the atmosphere if they were put on trucks instead. And you can have all of those arguments, but the point is, I think we should have those arguments before we're making a decision.
Counselor Zelenka?
Two, two points. Nobody hauls coal by truck anywhere. It's always by train, because it's not cost effective otherwise. Second point would be that the, the loss of coal is pretty well documented, and, and it is lots of profits and loss of profit. But the loss of profit is compared to the cost of doing something about it. And they can't cover the coal trains, because the gases create a fire hazard, and so that's not a possible solution. And they don't put a surfactant on it to prevent the dust from escaping, kind of a polymer, because it just costs so much. And so they're left with just having it be open air. The cost of, of the loss of profit from the coal versus the cost of doing something about it is lower, so they don't do anything about it. And I don't see, from what I know, I don't see those, that economics turning around anytime soon. So I don't think that's gonna be, there might be certain things that happen in the future, but I don't, I haven't, nobody's told me what they would be. They said that they might come up with something later down the road, unless you press them, if you press them for more specifics, then it happened. As far as having a further discussion on this, I, I think that's great. I was wondering if we could postpone it to a time certain, and I would ask for a friendly amendment that we add to the work session on July 18th.
It's on work session. That's our, one where we have a really big agenda.
With Occupy Eugene.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be supportive of postponing this until after Friday.
You wouldn't?
We've spent a lot of time on this already.
It's a time sensitivity.
I don't know if it'd make any difference. All right, I'll go on to Counselor Farr.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess, I would prefer to just have a broader discussion on it, and I really sincerely do not see any time sensitivity on this, in, in light of the fact that it's gonna be some time before any, any actions, any actions being taken regarding shipping the coal, coal by train. I, I want to hear more about it. In fact, I kind of resent being asked to say yes or no on this resolution tonight before I know all the facts. I simply do not know all the facts. I've heard conjecture. I've heard Monday night testimony. And, and as we witness, all the time, Monday night testimony can be fairly well-stacked on whatever, whatever the subject that's being testified upon. So I, I would like to have a work session. If it has to be after the council break, that's fine. I just don't see the time sensitivity on it. Let's talk about it. Let's, let's get it out in the open. Let's have a broad discussion about it where all councillors can have their questions answered, rather than being forced to say yes or no on a moment's notice.
Counselor Ortiz.
I think I'll pass, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, there's been quite a bit of public testimony, and there's been presentations at the city club, there's Toxic Alliance, there's been, you know, pretty much, a lot of information has been presented and very little in defense of the coal train. And there's been ample opportunity to disprove the facts and figures being put forward by the people that want to see, that don't want to see the coal train come through town. I mean, a simple thing you can do is, like when you had your 4th of July barbecue, and you went and you got some of that charcoal, and you poured it out. Remember all the dust at the bottom of the bag? That's just a bag of charcoal. They make the stuff over in Springfield. That's the amount of dust that came from the Springfield plant to your local grocery store. Can you imagine a coal train going 1,500 miles from the mine in Wyoming? Actually, it's more than 1,500 miles, because it's not a straight shot. It's a longer shot. They have to go to Portland. So, you know, and three of those trains a day, going back and forth, most of the dust will come out with the full train. There's still dust in the empty train. That's the finer particulates. And that dust contains mercury, arsenic, and lead. And there's no question about that. There's no doubt about that. That's a scientific fact. So Eugene's in the unique position that we get the double whammy. We get the coal trains coming through, up to three a day each way, at, you know, full, full build out of the port's capability. And then we get mercury dust coming back from Asia. I don't know about the plant in Korea, one of the potential partners here, but there's no environmental controls in China. Coal is burned in China. There's no scrubbers. There's no filters. People wear rags over, you know, over their, over their face, and that's how they walk around on the street, breathing all this stuff. So, that goes up in the air, the other stack, goes across the Pacific, comes down in Oregon, in the rain. So we get it twice. Not only do we get it with the coal dust coming through, we also get it within the rainfall a few weeks later. So, I'm ready to vote on this tonight. I, I don't, I don't see really any, any reason for delaying it. I don't think we're gonna learn, you know, any shocking new facts, pro or con. Thanks.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the time to act on, time to act on something is before it happens, instead of waiting until we're breathing the coal dust and trying to say we want this to stop. The earlier we express an opinion, the better, if we have any chance of influencing what happens. And I think we should vote on it tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka?
So, a couple of things. One, this isn't on a moment's notice. You had this resolution for weeks. Oops, sorry. You've had this resolution for weeks. It was a topic of conversation at the city club. Register Guard and Eugene Weekly have written articles about it. There's been many public events about this, and there's been a pretty large community discussion, as well as the public testimony that we've had, plus the numerous emails that we've received about this. So, to say it's a moment's notice, I, I can't agree with that. The time sensitivity of this is not when the first coal train comes through Eugene in 2016. It takes years of pre-planning, of developing contracts, of building new infrastructure. That has to be all built before a single, and, and a substantial amount of resources are committed to this whole effort before the, the single, before the first coal train ever arrives in Eugene. So, 2016 is, is a red herring. That's not the urgency of it. The urgency of it is today. The urgency of it is that all this planning has been going on for months. They're very close to inking all these deals. They're very close to having commitments without this cumulative programmatic environmental impact statement that the governor's calling for, that will show and, and examine the, will examine the public health impacts and the other impacts of the numerous. I think there's five or six different plans to have coal be exported from Wyoming and Man- Montana through Oregon and into the Pacific Northwest. And that cumulative impacts of all that is what the governor's talking about. That needs, take a long time to do. That needs to occur today, not in a year or two from now. That would be too late. Not even a month from now might be too late. So I think there is an urgency to this. It is time sensitive, because all those things I was talking about are in play and will take years to occur. It's not 2016 when the first train arrives here. It's way before that. So, I would move to amend that we move to have this work session on the, add it to the July 16th calendar before the, the public hearing on Monday, which is at 7:30. We don't have anything on that agenda date, date at this point, time.
I'm fine with that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm fine with that.
And that would just add a little earlier to our agenda. Maybe we can even come in at?
Did we have a motion on the table?
I meant to meet before on the 16th.
We had your motion.
Yeah, he made a motion.
I meant to meet before on the 16th. So I, my question was...
I meant to meet before on the 16th, so my question was, was that a friendly, is that what you were offering?
If you take it as a friendly.
If the meeting begins at 7:30, and we're going to do that first?
We're not going to have a work session like a...
Work session before 7:30. Well, we could do it as part of the 7:30.
Mayor, just as a reminder, there is nothing on the 7:30 meeting in July 16th right now.
So we could do it as a...
Do 7:30?
A work session at 7:30?
You could, there's no meeting on the 16th right now, so...
Okay, it's on the calendar.
It's on here. Right, but there's nothing, there's no topic.
So, what, at least some of the couns...
After a work session? So we could do the work session?
We could do the work session at 7:30 on the 16th.
And then until after.
If you'd like.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Don't accept that as a friendly?
Yes.
So say what the friendly is now, Mike?
And he was the...
We were, we're going to have a work session on the 16th at 7:30, and that we will consider this after we've completed that. There's no topic, so this would be it.
This would be it?
Sorry, guys.
Well, we consider it.
What did I hear?
Consider it on the 16th, after the work session. Right, okay.
You good with that, Mike?
I was, yeah.
Okay, I got to ask you. Okay, so we're going to vote on that? All those in, would you vote on that motion? Seven in favor and none in opposition, so we're going to come back to this on the 16th? Okay, so that takes us to, we have one more thing here, and that's Betty's resolution. Betty?
I move to direct the city manager to bring back to council, wait a minute, on July 23rd, a resolution referring to the voters and advisory question on amending the US Constitution on corporate personhood.
Second.
Moved in, seconded. Want to speak to it, Betty?
We've heard a lot about this from people who've testified, we've gotten a lot of emails, and we've seen sample resolutions, I don't have a resolution with me tonight, but this is really about campaign spending and the fairness of corporations being, well, the idiocy of corporations being called persons, but being allowed to spend endless amounts of money on elections. And we wouldn't be deciding that, this motion is just to refer it to the voters, whether they wish the city to take a stand.
And you're referring it for the May?
I'm asking for, it would be the...
No, November.
The November.
November?
But it would be a resolution for us to discuss that.
Okay, all right. Counselor Farr?
Thank you. I'm not concerned about this resolution, because it's simply asking to bring something back, that's fine, but what I would ask is for us to have at the same time a notion of what this would cost. If we're going to refer something on the ballot, I'd just like to know what it's, what the election cost is for us to put this on the ballot, not that it's necessarily a huge part of the decision, but I'd like to know what things cost whenever you put them on the ballot.
Counselor Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor, I was going to ask kind of the same question and just kind of verify that you're, what we're asking you to do, city manager, is just to bring us back the resolution, then we would vote whether we were going to put that resolution on the ballot or not.
That's correct.
Thank you, city manager.
Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah, I'm in favor of having a conversation about that, I'm not necessarily in favor of this motion, though. We don't typically put everything out as a referral to the voters, and as part of that work, can you bring back kind of a history going back, I don't know, five or so years, maybe 10, about resolutions for referrals that the city council has done, what kind they were, and the nature of them?
Are we able to...
Probably isn't that many.
Yes, you came here and you will catch everyone by...
Yeah, that's fine, I know that we don't typically just refer everything...
A brief history?
Yeah, a brief history of time.
A referring to...
That we can refer to.
That way you can refer to.
All right, anything else for the good of the order tonight? All right, we have to vote on that?
We have to vote on that.
So would you vote on that?
It's been moved and seconded.
Yes, it was. Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes, so we will be revisiting that. Thank you all?
Good work, Mike.
Oh, thank you.